Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our Planning Board meeting, Thursday, August 29th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And do we have any declaration of conflicts today? Seeing none, can I have an approval of the agenda? Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Paul. All those in favor? Wonderful. Can I have an adoption of the minutes from the last Planning Board meeting on, from Tuesday, August 6th? Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Bobby Kenny. All those in favor? Thank you. Any business arising from those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right on to our reports. We have three today. And our first one is 13 Pleasant Street and 301-303 Houston Street. And our senior planner, Laurel Palmer Thompson, is here to present the application to us.
Chair, just before we go on, I just did have one question, sorry. I missed that. Do we have dates for those public consultations on 53 Moro Drive, 7 McKinnon Road?
No, we haven't scheduled the exact dates. I suspect maybe September, but there's been no...
We've never had any announcement.
No, nothing yet.
Okay, thanks.
Over to you, Laurel.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of Planning Board. This is an application for 13 Pleasant Street, PID number 364109, and 301 to 303 Houston Street for a request for severance and lot consolidation. So this application for the lot consolidation is to convey a portion of PID number 1081124, parcel A, located at 301 to 303 Houston Street. And the intent is to append it to PID number 364109 at 13 Pleasant Street. So these are the two parcels in question, Pleasant and then Houston Street. The portion that will be appended is back here. The properties are located in the medium-density residential zone, R3. And the purpose of the lot consolidation is to increase the backyard for the existing single detached dwelling located on Pleasant Street. So the proposal is to convey parcel A, which is 88 square meters in size. And it's shown, I'm just going to flip to the sub-plan here. So this is parcel A, it's 88 meters in size. This is the property that will be taking this portion and it'll be severed off of the Houston Street property. So the property at 3031 Houston Street is currently undersized in lot area for semi-detached dwelling. There is a semi-detached dwelling on that property. However, the lot area for the single detached dwelling at 13 Pleasant Street, it's also undersized. Section 4811.1 of the bylaw does allow for the conveyance and consolidation of land between undersized lots, provided they were lawfully in existence at the effective date of this bylaw. And just to note that this is an older area of the city, so all the lots along the road, Houston and Pleasant, would be undersized in comparison to what the bylaw requires today. So 4811.1 in the bylaw states that the development officer may approve an undersized lot if an existing undersized lot is consolidated with another parcel in order to bring the new consolidated lot closer to the minimum requirements of this bylaw, provided that the remaining parcels or parcels meet the lot requirements of the bylaw, or if they were lawfully existing on the effective date of this bylaw. And that's the clause that we are basing this on. They are undersized themselves, but they were lawfully existing on the effective date of the bylaw, which would have been 1998. So legislative requirements, section 48.34 of the zoning and development bylaw requires that lot consolidations in the medium-density R3 zone, they must be approved by council. So pursuant to section 483.5, subdivision and consolidation of lots in the bylaw, notice of the Planning Board meeting regarding the requested lot consolidation was sent to property owners located within 100 meters and 328.1 feet of the subject property. And the notice solicited their written comments, either for or against the lot consolidation. The deadline to submit the written comments was 12 noon on August 15th. August 29th? Oh, the thing in the bylaw, or in the, was August 29th? Oh, sorry, sorry, August 29th. They were sent out on the 15th. My mistake, apologize. So a total of 85 letters were mailed. There were no letters received in response to the notification letter. So given, given section 4811 of the bylaw supports consolidation of undersized parcels, staff are able to approve the conveyance if council approves the consolidation. So therefore, the Planning and Heritage Department is encouraging Planning Board to recommend for approval of the lot consolidation. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you for your report, Laurel. I'll just open it up to the board. Does anybody have any questions? Counselor Beck?
Not really. I mean, I don't have extensive history with this, but is this a rare thing? Does this happen much where we get conveyance of one parcel to another parcel? Like, or is this a common occurrence, or is it a kind of a...
You'd be more apt to see a type of thing like this happen in the older areas of Charlottetown.
Okay.
But Laurel, if you had anything additional you wanted to add to that?
Sorry, Chair, I should have addressed that through to you.
That's okay, through the chair. Yes, it happens all the time, even in areas in the city that meet the bylaw. There's, all the time people are trading land and purchasing land and adding to a piece and making things larger. I mean, you guys have seen lots of consolidations that have come together where whole parcels are consolidated to facilitate larger projects. In this case, it's just to append a portion so that someone else can have a larger backyard. And given that both properties are undersized, there really doesn't make a difference who has that parcel of land. Neither one meets the bylaw, although the single detached one was severely undersized, so that does bring it closer in conformity.
And I have no issue, I have no issues trying to understand. That's good, thank you, Laurel.
Any other questions? So the staff has recommended that Planning Board, recommended council that we approve and request, the request for a lot consolidation. So does anyone want to put that motion on the floor? Okay, moved by Rosemary, seconded by Counselor McCabe. So the resolution is on the floor to accept staff's recommendation and move it on to council. Any questions on the resolution? If not, we can call the question, any, all those in favor? Great, that is unanimous, thank you very much. Wonderful. Now we will go on, go to break, Mark. We will move on to our next item on the agenda. And that is for a major variance, major variance, 450-466 Malpec Road. David Gundrum, our manager of development planning, is here to present the application to us. Over to you, David.
Thank you, Chair Yankoff. So as mentioned, this is an application for a major variance, a request for increased building height in the C2 zone. It's a request to allow for two six-story apartment buildings on the subject property, identified as PID 134981, 134999, and 135004. The first building would propose to have 82 apartment units, while building number two would have 65 apartment units. And the request is to allow for a maximum built height of up to 25 meters or 82 feet for the proposed buildings on the subject property, shown on the slide above. So context, the subject properties are located on the east side of Malpec Road, which is a north-south arterial road under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. Subject properties are located within the highway commercial C2 zone adjacent to low-density residential uses agricultural lands and nearby highway commercial development. The subject properties are currently vacant and undeveloped and contain no buildings or structures currently. With regard to our legislative requirements in accordance with section 3.9 of the zoning and development bylaw, on August 15th, 2024, a written notification was sent to property owners within 100 meters or 328 feet of the subject property. A total of 25 letters were sent to residents advising them of the, of the Planning Board meeting tonight to solicit comments and feedback. And to date, there have been no written responses from members of the public received with regard to the circulation. Next slide shows a concept site plan for what the development is proposed to look like. I'll just note the two buildings shown here would mirror each other in terms of their building height, although one would contain more units than the other. The total unit count on the site would be 147 units. Parking areas are shown here in shaded gray. It is proposed that there would be a right intern, a right turn, right intern only off of Malpec Road, and there would be an extension of Melody Lane, shown here in the shaded gray that would extend east from Malpec Road. This extension currently does not exist at the present time, in order to facilitate road access for the two apartment buildings shown here. Next is a rendering of the building elevations to show proposed scale and massing and cosmetic design of the buildings. I'll note for members of Planning Board that at the current time, the applicants have proposed affordable units for the buildings, so there will have to be, this proposal will also have to be put forth to the design review board as well. And to summarize our analysis of the request, and this is captured in our planning report as well, some positives concerning the development would be that it utilizes existing vacant, undeveloped land for higher-density use that would have direct access to municipal services, and that the property is along a major arterial road having direct road access. Some neutral comments that the development would require a building and development permit upon approval of the variance, and I should note also, sign off from design review board as well, and that the development would require utility and road servicing to the lot. And some shortcomings are, as noted, that a new road extension will be required to facilitate the proposed development. So to conclude, our recommendation to Planning Board is that Planning Board recommends to council that the following major variance for the subject properties, identified as PID numbers 134981, 134999, and 135004 be approved, which would be to increase the maximum allowable building height from 15 meters, 49.2 feet, to approximately 25 meters, 82 feet, to allow for the future construction of a six-story, 82-unit apartment building, and a six-story, 65-unit apartment building on the subject properties. So that is a summary of the requests, the minor variance requests and our recommendation to the board. And I'll turn it back over to the Chair for any questions and discussions. Thank you.
Thanks, David. And I, and once we move this on to council, if the board accepts staff's recommendation, it will then move on to design review, and unless there's discrepancy with the design review board, it won't be going back to council after that time. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, that is correct, yep.
Okay. So I'll just open it up to questions. Any questions on the major variance application? Okay, seeing none. The, the Planning and Heritage Department has encouraged the Planning Board to recommend to council that we accept staff's recommendation following the major variance for the subject properties. So do I have somebody who would like to move that? Moved by Paul, seconded by Rosemary. So the resolution is on the floor. Any questions on the recommendation? Okay, so all those in favor of staff's recommendation on to council? Any opposition? Wonderful. So that will move on to council. Thank you very much for that. So our final item on the agenda for this evening is 8 Willow Street, PID 368696. And this will also be David Gundrum, our manager of development planning. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair Yankoff. So the following application is a request for a major variance for a property addressed as 8 Willow Street, PID number 368696. This is a major variance request to recognize a reduced lot frontage, a reduced lot area, as well as reduced side yard and front yard setbacks for an existing building on, on the subject property, to allow for the establishment of a commercial daycare center within the mixed-use corridor MUC zone that applies to the property. So the context of the site, property is located on the east side of Willow Street, shown here, being a north-south local road that is north of Eden Street. Located within the mixed-use corridor MUC zone, subject property is adjacent to commercial as well as institutional development, with low-density residential development located across the street in the R2 zone. Subject property currently contains a single-story detached structure, which is approximately 980 square feet in building footprint size. With respect to legislative requirements, in accordance with section 3.9 of the zoning and development bylaw, on August 15th, 2024, written notification was sent to property owners within 100 meters, 328 feet of the subject property. Forty-seven letters in total were sent to residents to advise them of the meeting tonight to solicit comments and feedback. To date, there have been two written responses from members of the public, with one expressing support for the application and the other expressing, while not expressing opposition or support, expressed concern for parking and snow clearing during the winter months. The next slide illustrates site plan, which has been provided by the applicants, providing, shows a lay, internal layout of the structure with rooms here for the daycare, as well as the exterior rear yard area that would be fenced for an outdoor play area for the children, and driveway here to provide for onsite parking for daycare staff. So, and this is from our reporting on, and evaluation of the application. So some positives are that the proposed variances would help fulfill a community need that is currently in high demand throughout the city of Charlottetown, being available daycare spots for children. The property is within an established neighborhood and is located close to residential uses on a local street, which could benefit from the presence of the use on the property. A neutral comment is that the use would require building and development permit upon approval of the variance to confirm the change in use. And a shortcoming is that there is limited space on the site to accommodate parking. However, this is able to be compensated somewhat by the location of the building of the, current location of the building on the lot, which is also being addressed through the proposed relief from setback requirements. And so to summarize, our recommendation, Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council that the following major variance request for the subject property identified as 8 Willow Street, PID 368696 be approved. And that is to permit a commercial daycare center to operate within an existing single-story building, 980 square feet on the subject property, having a lot area of approximately 365 square meters, lot frontage of approximately 12.5 square, 12.5 meters, a front yard setback of approximately 2.17 meters, and a side yard setback of zero meters, whereas the zoning and development bylaw otherwise requires minimum lot area of 930 square meters, lot frontage of 24 meters, front yard setback of 7.6 meters, and minimum side yard setback of three meters for permitted commercial daycare center use. So that is summary of the application, the variance and our recommendation. And I'll turn it back over to the Chair for any questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Yes, Rosemary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question about the size of the play area for the children, given that it's a small lot.
I'm just looking here at the little drawing, if it shows sandbox play structure. Do you know offhand, David, the, the size of the actual play area? I see the driveway is marked.
Through the Chair, so the lot, I'll just, I'm going to flip to the air photo for the property. So as you see, the lot is rectangular, so the frontage is 12.5 meters, that's a little bit shy of 40 feet. The rear yard lot line would be not too far off from that 12.5 meter or a bit shy of 40-foot width. And if you take that into consideration, so the drawing that was provided to us, it shows, I would, I don't have my measuring tape here, but you'd be talking something around 35 to 40 feet in width by probably about 30 feet deep. So it's, it's a decent, it's a scale, it would be scaled to the, to the size of the dwelling. So I know the applicant is in attendance tonight and could perhaps speak further to that if, if the board wishes that and allows for that. But our understanding is that in terms of occupancy load, that the operators wish to accommodate for possibly up to about 15 children as part of the daycare center. And there would be younger children, infants, and possibly toddlers, but I would assume that, given the location of the building very forward of the lot, that that would allow for a decent, a sufficient area that would be appropriate to the number of children, that could, the potential maximum number of children that could potentially be served by the daycare. So I'll leave it at that. I hope that helps answer the question.
And isn't Willow, Willow Street's quite close to all of our park, too, isn't it? Is it? Oh, that's right, I'm up the other way over there.
Yeah, so through the Chair, I didn't mention this, but directly north of the site, I'll just go back to the air photo, that parking area shown here, that, that's the police parking lot.
Oh, yes, right.
So the police station is just off the image here, just to the north.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, very good. Julie?
No, I was just going to move that we accept staff's recommendation.
Just before we do, does anyone have any questions for the applicant that's here? I mean, it's pretty straightforward, staff is recommending it. I think Counselor McCabe was about to put a, put a resolution on the floor for that. But does anyone have a question for the applicant before we move on to the resolution? Okay, seeing none, go ahead. Counselor McCabe?
Thank you. I was just going to move that we do accept staff's recommendation.
Okay, so Counselor McCabe has moved it. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Lee. So the resolution is... So the resolution is on the floor to accept staff's recommendation to allow for the major variance for the subject property located at 8 Willow Street. Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor? Great, that is everybody. Wonderful, thank you very much for that. And the last item is any, any introduction of new business? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Chris Fournier. All those in favor? Wonderful. Have a good evening, and we'll see you next week for another Planning Board meeting. See ya.
Thank you. Good job.